All right, well, after patiently waiting, I think it is now six o'clock. So I would like to call us to order in accordance with South Carolina Code of Laws nineteen eighty-five, section thirty dash four dash eighty dash E. The following have been notified of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting. The Herald, the Charlotte Observer, CN two, NWRHI. If I could ask you all, please to join me first for a moment of silence. Thank you. We'll now stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. You've all received a copy of the agenda. Were there any adjustments or corrections?
No ma'am.
No ma'am.
All right, that will stand with unanimous consent. And then we get to start off with some exciting things, some special recognition. I'm just gonna kinda go in the order that they're listed here. And the first one is for a Health and Occupational Science Association. Ms. Scott, are you gonna come up and do the, there she is, recognition?
Can we put you in front of the, can we put you in front of the mic?
Can we get you to the podium where the microphone is?
Only because they don't hear it at home.
They can't hear you otherwise, sorry.
Hear you online.
Yeah.
Come on around. That's right.
Can you hear me? I don't wanna say too loud.
Yep, you're good.
All right, I'm Mrs. Scott. I'm a health science teacher at Fort Mill High School. And I am also the advisor for HOSA, which is Future Health Professionals. And I'm super proud of these girls that work really hard in the classroom and outside. They've studied about six months. And they placed first, Victoria Griffin, in Certified Medical Assisting. And Caroline Tucker, first for Certified Nursing Assisting. And what's really amazing about this is we don't even have those programs at our school. They beat other schools in the state that have CMA and CNA programs. So super proud of them.
That's awesome. Absolutely.
Nice work.
Congratulations, ladies. All right, let's see, next up, some conference champs in distributive education classes?
Just known as DECA.
Okay, DECA.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Molnar, and I am a business teacher at Fort Mill High School and our DECA advisor. The Fort Mill High School DECA team had an incredible year under the leadership of our chapter president, Isabella Martin, and vice president, Jackson Smith. You might be asking, what is DECA? DECA prepares emerging leaders and entrepreneurs for career in marketing, finance, hospitality, management, and high schools and colleges around the world. Students compete at the regional and state level to advance to the International Career Development Conference, which was held in Anaheim, California last year, or last week. Thirteen incredible students from Fort Mill High School advanced to the international conference and represented our school with professionalism and excellence. This is a one hundred percent increase in the number of high school, or Fort Mill High School DECA members that attended the international conference. Isabella and Jackson are back-to-back state champions in entrepreneurship decision-making and attended both the twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four international conferences. The twenty twenty-four international conference was the largest to date with twenty-three thousand people in attendance from around the world. The business department is beyond proud of the entire DECA team and are confident that Isabella and Jackson are gonna continue to be awesome. Thank you very much.
Great job. Now we've got some band students in the percussion and wind ensemble.
Hi, I'm David Chives. I'm one of the band directors at Catawba Ridge High School. And I'm here representing two of our ensembles that recently traveled to Dayton, Ohio, and won two WGI World Championships. One for our percussion group and one for our winds group. This is the first time a percussion ensemble has won a World Championship since two thousand and five. And this is the first time ever in the state of South Carolina that a winds organization has won a World Championship. And these are seniors from both of those groups. Thank you.
We're gonna have to squeeze in tight. And then, last but certainly not least, we've got some FFA winners.
Good evening. I'm Tim Pacehour from the Agriculture Department at Fort Mill High School. And we're here to recognize tonight our state-winning floriculture team. And these team members will go on to Indianapolis to join seventy thousand other students at the National FFA Convention. And they'll be representing the state of South Carolina and the Fort Mill School District at the national convention. I have Victoria Day, and she'll be studying next year at the University of South Carolina. And Jasmine and Tillman, and they will be at Clemson University in the College of Agriculture. So congratulations to them.
I know we've been doing... Sweet. I know we've been doing these recognitions whenever someone wins a state-level competition, but, you know, it's often been sports and athletics. So it's exciting to see some of the other programs as well getting those kind of recognitions. So very exciting. Our next item up is a school spotlight. We've got River Trail Elementary. Ms. Savannah Steger can kick it off for us.
Yes. I'll do the slides. All right. Good evening. My name is Savannah Steger. I am the principal at River Trail. And I have Mabor Wayman and Sarah Baird, our two assistant principals, with me today. As you may or may not know, River Trail is still the reigning newest elementary school in our district. Not for much longer, but I know, we're gonna hold on to that title as long as we can. And when we started in deciding who we wanted to be at River Trail, we decided to go all-in on two things. Our mission and our otter code, which I have here. Got it? These two things are the center of all that we do at our school. Through them, we have been able to successfully operate as our professional learning community. We've consistently grown our achievement scores, and we have helped establish a strong school culture that we are very proud of.
So one of the key pillars of our professional learning communities is promoting collective teacher efficacy and student self-efficacy. In three short years, we've changed, adapted, grown, and integrated these ideas into pretty much everything we do at River Trail. During all of our professional development, we've learned a lot about John Hattie and his effect-size research. And he looked at lots of different interventions and their effects in the classrooms. And he kinda made a hinge point and said that anything that is above four tenths they consider to have a significant impact on student learning. And he ranked those from like highest to lowest. Two of the pieces that we have really focused on, you can see on the screen, their effect size is much greater than four tenths.
All right, so we have really focused on collective teacher efficacy, which is the shared belief amongst teachers that what they do has a great impact on student achievement. One of the main things that we do is hold ourselves, as the staff of River Trail, along with our students, to high expectations. So one of the first things we did this year, after going to another PLC conference, was we created this board. It says, higher expectations equals higher growth. And we asked all of our teachers, our staff members, to send in a special child in their life, whether it be their son, their daughter, a niece, a nephew, a child that they've taught before. And just, we always ask them, is it good enough for them? Because that is something that we want them to remember. Your job matters so much, and you have everyone's babies in your classroom every day. And if it's good enough for your child, then it needs to be good enough for everyone else's child as well. So those high expectations are very, very important for our teachers. Another way we maintain high expectations is goal-setting. So as you can see, the bottom picture is our goal board. That has all of our tests that we have to take yearly, the STAR test, SE Ready. We have each time we take them, and then we set a goal, and then we have our actual scores on there. And they use those to create the goal for the next year. And above that is our celebration. So not only do we have our goals, we also like to celebrate and remind them, you're meeting these goals. And our teachers have consistently met those goals. So a big part of that efficacy is all the work that you've put in, all the collaboration you do matters, and you're meeting those goals because of it. We also are focusing on our student self-efficacy, which honestly, we do a lot of the same stuff with our students as we do with our teachers. And it's their belief that they can achieve those tasks and goals on their own. It helps them to grow self-confidence. It helps them to be persistent and helps them be problem solvers. And as the first experience in education in elementary school, we want to ensure that they have all those skills when moving on to middle and high school.
All right. I went too far. There we go. All right, we could stand up here all night and tell you more and more about the things that we're doing to increase student and teacher efficacy. But as you know, in Fort Mill, we put children first every day. And so we figured it would be better to show you through our children's eyes what we are doing at school. We ask that you keep in mind, these are not paid actors. They are children. So there's, you know, a little, some fun in there. You're gonna hear about things such as our otter tickets, which I know you helped participate in when you came to visit, outstanding otters, our spirit sticks, clubs, goal-setting, things to get involved in, all kinds of stuff through our kids' eyes.
Two ways we earn otter tickets is working hard and taking care of each otter. We can do that by paying attention in class and helping friends whenever they lost their class.
One way we can spend our otter tickets is by sitting with a buddy at lunch.
And we could be a principal for an hour.
Or get a token.
Or go to a Catawba Ridge sporting event.
That's how we earned, spent our otter tickets on everybody.
Yeah.
I spent my otter tickets on a safety check with Officer Powell with kids whose nice and fun.
At River Trail, we can earn outstanding otter by working hard, taking care of each otter, related arts, or any subject.
I have received four outstanding otters for taking care of each otter, working hard, another taking care of each otter, and related arts art. I felt proud and excited when I got my outstanding otter, and my parents felt proud about me, too. My outstanding otter made me want to work harder to aim to get another one.
I've had three outstanding otters, one for writing, one for taking care of each otter, and one for PE. When I got those outstanding otters, I felt like I wanted to try and earn more. And when my parents knew that I had gotten outstanding otter, they felt proud of me.
One way I earn individual otter spirit sticks is by becoming fluent in multiplication and division. And this made me really proud of myself. And whenever my classmates get individual spirit sticks, it makes me wanna celebrate them, too.
Hi, good morning.
Morning, guys. We are here to celebrate. Go, Jack. Jack, do you know what you did? Why'd you get this? Which ones? Eights, fours. All of them? Did you do all of them? Sixes, nines. All right, the spirit you get's out. Congratulations, dude. Cry me. Good job, guys. Cry you.
That's fluent, I love it, girl.
Good job. Hard work.
We have decided to set a hallway expectation goal. And what were some of the expectations we have for our hallway? Marla?
Walking quietly in the hallway.
We wanna walk quietly in the hallway. All right, what else? Blake?
Walking with a purpose.
We wanna walk with a purpose. What else do we wanna do, Nate?
Walk safely.
And we wanna walk safely. Why do we have these hallway expectations?
Why don't we jump on?
Wanna raise our hand? One. Right, we could end up hurting someone, we could distract other classes. Caleb, what else? Right, and why we not walk beside people? What might that make us do? It might make us talk. And Caleb, that's a great segue into talking about our strategies. So we wanna come up with some good strategies that we can use to help us reach this goal. So what are some things that we can do to help ourselves reach this goal? I want you to turn to a friend and talk to them. What kind of strategies could we use to help us have these expectations? Nolan?
A single-file line.
We can walk in a single-file line. So kinda like, that's what Caleb said, too. When we're walking side by side, what are we tempted to do?
Talk.
We're tempted to talk. So if we walk in a single-file line...
And then it'll cause a chain reaction of other people starting to talk.
All right, let's go over those strategies and let's see if these make sense. All right, so a strategy to help us walk safely, walk with a purpose, and walk, sorry, walk quietly, walk with a purpose, and walk safely is to walk in a single-file line. Use a smart spot in line. Yeah, I'll write it. Use a silent symbol, and use waiting games or breathing to stay calm. What do y'all think about that?
Yeah.
All right.
Some classroom goals that you've set this year.
Reading, Sam.
Our latest quick and quiet transition goal.
Growing our STAR test. And our new one, hallway expectations.
Why is setting goals important?
It helps us learn the expectations.
It helps us, it motivates us to grow and practice skills.
It motivates us to work hard to take care of each otter. And it motivates us to turn negative to positive.
Miss Emery, can I interrupt?
Yeah.
No. We are here to celebrate you guys reached your goal of showing respect. What did y'all do to earn this goal?
We showed respect in related arts.
Emery, what'd you do?
We showed respect in related arts.
Beautiful. Good job, guys. We're so proud of you.
Some opportunities we have at River Trail are Girls on the Run, News Crew, Talent Show, and Otter Agents.
We have reading giraffe, soccer stars, we have chess club, and we have otter agents, which she said already, and they're all just awesome.
I love the opportunities at River Trail because it makes school fun. It helps us with opportunities. It sees, it like shows what we're good at. And it also prepares us for middle school. And it like helps us express ourselves. If there's something that we like to do, we're able to do it even in school, not just at school.
What are some things we do at River Trail to help our students academically?
Some teachers will pull us in groups.
And in the morning, there are IXL groups, and teachers will pull you when you're in your classroom.
How do these things help you to grow?
It helps us for some things that we don't understand, and it might help us go above grade level.
And it helps us with our skills.
All right. Both of these students grew three months worth or more in just the month of April in the area of reading. Can I get a drum roll, please? Hudson. Scarlett. Good job, guys. Proud of you.
That is the end. Thank you for allowing us to just share a few of the things we do at our school. As you can see, we hope it's having a huge impact on our kids and then also our big kids, our teachers and staff. And we are really proud of them, but we also feel the goal-setting is impactful, but so is the celebration and recognizing all the hard work that they put in every single day. It was great to see the progress in the scores and all that, but it was also great to see the individual recognitions that the rest of the class cheers on and that kind of thing.
Yeah, that positive peer pressure is very formative, we feel like.
Very exciting. Congratulations.
I have a couple of questions for you.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. So, a lot of familiar faces there.
That's right.
Those of you that don't know, I've spent the most hours out of all of our elementary schools at River Trail via invitation. I've read from eight AM to one PM, a couple occasions.
We're very grateful.
Yes, I've gone and mentored a little bit. So I've been excited every time I've visited the location. Mabor, I have a question for you because you mentioned it.
Okay.
PLC, you mentioned professional learning community. Share with me what that means to you, PLC.
So we actually call our PLCs RAFs because a group of otters together is called a RAF. And so we refer to them as our RAF meetings. And because all of our teachers, all of our support people are coming together, and we're working together on a common goal. And so we refer to it as RAF because we all are pulling apart the standards. We are analyzing data. We are looking at where our kids are, where do we need to be, making those goals, digging down deep into what's next. One of the students referenced on there, you know, they help us keep growing. And that's one of the things that we have really like dove into is to find out where each child individually is. And we work collectively in order to help build them up. And so stopping at third grade, if you're a third grader, isn't necessarily where it is. But it can't be one teacher doing all of that. I mean, all of us take groups in the morning. We have all of our support staff that we have. We even have some of our kindergarten assistants who work with older students. So that professional learning community honestly is a time that we come together and learn and grow.
Thank you.
And just to piggyback off that, I wanna thank the school board and our district administration for the support in sending our teachers to PLC conferences. I know Dr. Wakesis and I have been emailing just recently. One commitment that we made as an administration when we started was to send every faculty member, regardless of their position. So Dr. Wakesis has been super supportive this year. We're finally, we've got all of our certified staff through in just three years. And we're now working on our classified staff. And that's important because they work with kids every day. PLC is in a meeting. It's who we are. And so we want every adult in our building to feel integrated into that process. That helps.
Yes, thank you.
Yep. Other questions?
Any more?
Well, thank you again. Congratulations on your Lighthouse Award.
Thank you.
Just a great three years so far.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
This school spotlight is a fairly new thing, but I think it's become my favorite part of meetings to get to highlight the personalities and the activities going on at each of the schools. Absolutely. Okay, we do have a couple of minutes to approve, actually, three. We had two board, traditional board meetings on April ninth and April twenty-third, along with a special, very quick, special call meeting on April the twelfth. So we'll just go one by one, starting with April ninth. Were there any adjustments or corrections to those minutes? Those will stand with, as approved unanimous consent, then. April twenty-third, any adjustments or corrections there?
No ma'am.
All right, also approved with unanimous consent. And then the special call brief meeting on April twelfth. Any adjustments there?
No ma'am.
All righty, then those also will stand with unanimous consent. I did receive cards, unless there's any more, just these? Okay, I've got three cards for public participation. We have fifteen-minute window, so everybody gets five minutes. And I'm just, I've got them in the order that they were handed to me. So first up is Julie Scudary. If you wanna come to the podium, and then you can approach the, present to the board.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. My name is Julie Scudary, and I'm a resident of Baxter Village. And I'm coming tonight as a concerned parent. It was disappointing to see such a nonchalant response from the Fort Mill School Board, with the exception of the statement from Joe Helms regarding the impact of Sylfab Solar to our schools and our community. We're not just talking about disaster preparedness in the storing of hazardous chemicals on site in only steps away from thousands of students, but we're talking about a seventy-foot smokestack which will continually emit toxic chemicals indefinitely at a rate of ninety feet per second. That's ninety feet of smoke per second. And I'm glad this speech was prefaced by that wonderful video and those sweet children. And if you could just imagine those kids spending eight hours of their day next to a smokestack, I know my kids wouldn't be spending time there. I wouldn't wanna spend time there as a teacher or an administrator. And for those that aren't aware, in order to create this green technology, which is ironic, silica rock has to be burned at high temperatures using coal-powered electricity. Those fumes will blanket our schools, our community, our parks, and our precious green spaces. It will pollute the air and our water. Sylfab Solar took their manufacturing from China to our small little town in Fort Mill. And instead of taking a stand for our children, you simply said, let's trust the EPA, as if the men in suits in Washington care at all about our town here in Fort Mill. I'm urging you to take a stand, and maybe by Thursday, our zoning department can feel the outrage and the urgency to deny them this rezone they are seeking in order to commence operations. Thank you.
Next up is Elena Brahmo.
Ladies and gentlemen, trustees, and Superintendent Epps, it's good to be here with you at the end of this beautiful day. I'm Elena Brahmo of Mason's Bend. I'm a mom of six. I've had several children go through the district here, so I'm still in the district. And I'd like to piggyback off of what Mrs. Scudary said um about the Sylfab solar panel issue. Uh, while I'm sure most of us are supportive of businesses and creating job opportunities, I think most would also agree that the type of business and location to our schools certainly matter. I do appreciate some board members being transparent in their posts regarding planning, approval, and zoning. And I too want to encourage citizen activity with the organizations that have decision-making authority. So, I'd like to use this time to invite any and all students, parents, teachers, staff, and administrators in the Fort Mill School District to the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting this Thursday, May ninth at five thirty P M. At the York County Government Center at Six South Congress Street in York. While the school board is not directly responsible for the decision to allow Sylfab, a Canadian company, to operate here, your support and advocacy can make a big difference. I recall in the last election, many of you promised to be good stewards of our tax dollars, advocates for teachers and students, and even stated that you have some strong political connections. So, and many of you may be running for office this year or a school board incumbents. Canadian businesses don't vote this November, but we do. So, now is the time to stand with your constituents to attempt to ward off a potentially hazardous plant so close to almost three thousand Fort Mill School District students and employees. And if you're not able to be present Thursday, please email Emily dot Stevens, a Stevens with a P H, at York County Gov dot com. She's the coordinator for the Board of Zoning Appeals. And please request that the location for Sylfab remain light industrial. The reason for that is this building was created to be for distribution purposes, light industry. So, we don't want it to be zoned for heavy industry, which is what this will be emitting these toxins around our students and faculty. And just an aside, since I have a little extra time, um, when I taught in an older school building in Anderson School District one, I had to sign a waiver because there was asbestos in the ceiling tiles. And so, they they had to make sure that I was aware of that and there were some health risks that came uh along with that. And had I been in the older part of the biz, the building, teaching my second grade class, I would have been more concerned for sure. I was in the newer part of the building, so I signed the waiver and kept teaching. But I think if I were a teacher coming into a school district and you were trying to hire for these new schools, these beautiful schools, and seeing the beautiful children that would be coming in there, um, I would be reluctant both as a parent and an employee to work there or semi-children there, honestly. You know, they are our most precious commodity. They can't be replaced. Businesses can, children cannot, and neither can good teachers. So, we need to make sure that we take care of all of those people in our district. And the last thing is, um, you know, I think we need to be practical and think about the real estate value in the area. It's, I would think it would decline. I wouldn't want to move to a school zone um that I knew was so close to a plant like that. So, you know, I know that there are some real estate agents on the board and in the community, and so this would definitely be a concern. And how would that affect our schools and our teachers? So, thank you for this time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And then the third speaker, Ashley Mock.
Hello, everyone. A little bit shorter than everyone else that has talked today, but it's okay. Um, I'm Ashley and I live in the Regent Park area. My oldest daughter goes to Sugar Creek Elementary School and my youngest will be attending kindergarten in the next fall. Um, I am coming to you about the same issue about Sylfab. Um, a lot of people haven't learned about this until maybe a few days ago. This has been in the works probably, I want to say for over a year or so now. Um, so they have, you know, they have to go through all these permits and regulations and all the things. Um, what some people may not know though is D Heck, um, their regulations are for if you're out in the middle of nowhere or if they're within city city limits. Regulations are exactly the same. Doesn't matter how big or small a town is, or if you're out somewhere in the woods, the regulations are exactly the same. Um, also as well, the mixture of toxic chemicals, they have never been tested that mixed together before. The, one of the toxic chemicals is hydrogen fluoride. It's highly toxic. In short exposure, it can lead to death. Um, it's very small amounts. Now, these chemicals are supposed to be contained, but as human beings, we make errors. So, as it's going to be thirteen hundred feet from the school, from the new schools, twenty-five hundred students in the new school, with the new schools. It is at least a mile from my home in Regent Park. Um, we sorry, um, my daughter has dealt with um toxic stuff. She has A D H D. So, anything with toxic chemicals that's in our food, that's a whole nother issue, but certain things she can, her body cannot break it down. So, she has to be detoxed twice a week. Um, and she has a five oh four for that. So, the air quality that we breathe in now, that is terrible for other kids who suffer from different disabilities, so A D H D, autism, anything like that. Their bodies cannot handle it. This is, has nothing to do with what Democratic or Republican Party, whatever party you vote for, it does not matter. That has nothing to do with this. This is the only thing that should matter is our children. And the fact that is of the matter that um according to the fire department, we are in a mi- one mile evacuation route. So, twenty-one, if you've ever been on twenty-one in traffic trying to get to and from where you're trying to go, you get stuck. So, the kids will be locked down in the school. Can you imagine how scary that would be for children to be locked down in school in an evacuation? Or anytime that if there's any chemicals dispersed, I think it's absolutely terrifying. I'm just asking that if this Sylfab wants to be somewhere, it should not be in Fort Mill. It is right behind way too many businesses. Our Greenway is a beloved place that everyone in the community that I know of goes. It's a sanctuary. It is a place that we take our children to run outside when our neighborhoods are, some of our streets are filled with traffic all the time. It's a safe place for us to go. And I feel like the air quality would absolutely be horrible. And I just don't feel like this is a place that it needs to be. So. And um yeah, I don't think anybody wants to wake up, walk outside, and be able to have to go back inside because the chemicals are so bad. And with the winds, the high winds that we get here, they can just blow right over even in Charlotte. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, we have several um reports and information, starting with some financial updates and then budget update for Ms. Lordo.
Thank you and good evening. Um, I'm going to start with the monthly financials. Um, we are closing out in your packet um the ninth month in the fiscal year, so we're three quarters through the fiscal year. Total revenues at that period to date were one hundred and eighty-one point nine million and total expenditures one hundred fifty-one point three. So, as we would hope and expect, we were positive fund balance of thirty point six million. And just to give you and those watching some perspective, um, our monthly expenditures are eighteen million. So, even though thirty million sounds like a large number, um, it's really a little shy of two months of operating expenditures. But once again, uh, we had um a good month for vehicle tax collections. We were at one million six hundred ninety-three thousand. So, if I round that up, one point seven million in vehicle taxes came in for the month of March. We had no significant delinquent real estate taxes for March. Um, and projecting out, as I like to do this time of year, projecting out tax revenue to June thirtieth, I think we will be in the range of two million to two point five million. Um, it'll depend on the final county reconciliation. Um, and that comes to mind because um they recently asked for the one hundred and thirty-five day count, so they will reallocate the countywide. Should go in our favor as being the highest enrollment in York County. But um I will wait to get that final number um for taxes. But also based on being probably a little under on expenditures, um, I will bring to you at the next board meeting our recommendation for a year-end transfer um net of what we need to put in fund balance going forward to maintain our nineteen to twenty percent uh level for fund balance. Um, any questions on March? No other significant um activity that I noted for March to share. Um, moving on to impact fees, um, total collected to date sixty-five million seven hundred eighty-four thousand. We've had two thousand five hundred and twelve single-family units and one thousand six hundred and seventy-nine multifamily. April, uh, we saw twenty-six homes come on. You have the monthly report for your review. We did not have any apartments. We've had a few months now with no apartments, but um just primary homes. Comparable data, we're still tracking the same. And then our average for calendar year last year was five hundred ninety-seven thousand. I compare that to the April um actual, we were at four hundred and seventy-two with our twenty-six homes. So, we were just slightly shy, but still strong based on our average monthly collections for last year. Um, we're continuing to draw our impact fees from the county for the construction of Elementary Twelve. We drew a little over two million dollars last week. Um, we are starting to accumulate um our cost, um, some invoices we paid for Middle School Seven. And when those get to a certain level, I will do the first draw from the county on Middle School Seven as well. And we will do those separately so that we're tracking it very distinctly for our purposes and for the county purposes for impact fees.
Ms. Lordo.
Sure.
I'm seeing a word I don't really like.
Okay.
Here, and that word is refund.
Refund of
Four of these things.
Impact fees?
Yes.
Um, and I can get more specifics and share that with you from the county as far as the detail of what triggered a refund. Sometimes I believe it is when a home has been permitted and then for various reasons, they decide to stop and do not construct that home.
Okay.
Because a builder, my understanding is a builder will come in and permit, let's say, a whole street, multiple homes. And then they may decide not to build on certain lots and the county would have to refund.
Got it.
I think it's also a timing. I think they have a certain amount of time before that permit expires. They would have to pull it again.
And then they have to pull it again. So, those two things.
And these refunds were processed in June of twenty-three, so this is the new.
So, these were, so just so I understand, these were like paid under protest and then ultimately?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
No.
It's just if they didn't end up building the house that they paid for, then they get their money back.
Got it.
Or the time extension.
Or the timing and they have, they get a refund and then have to repay for the new permit.
Some are paid under protest, correct.
Yeah, some do.
Some are noted as paid under protest. Yeah.
I got you.
But it does not impact, my understanding is whether it is noted as paid under protest does not impact a refund situation.
Right.
Which I think was going to your probably original question.
I guess.
Sure.
Ms. Lordo, how many s- single-family houses was that? I missed that.
Um, single-family homes, we've had two thousand five hundred and twelve and multifamily one thousand six hundred and seventy-nine for a total now. We've gone over four thousand under the new impact fee. We're at four thousand one hundred ninety-one. Comparable data, twelve months rolling for single-family, we're still eighty-five percent more on single-family than the um twelve months of last year, but we're still fifty percent less on apartments.
Yeah, last year was a bigger apartment year.
Correct. So, we're seeing a shift more for single-family homes.
Well, and there's, there's probably, I just drove three different areas with clients and there's about three different new townhome communities. So, don't worry, they're coming.
They're coming. Any other questions on impact fees? Okay, I'll move on to the budget and um I'm going to start by just kind of giving you a quick update of what I understand is going on in Columbia right now as far as the state budget. Um, the Senate did pass their version of the budget. Um, I believe I shared with you at the last meeting that they uh lowered the amount of funding for the state aid to classrooms um or the education funding by thirty million dollars. So, they put in two hundred million versus the House budget had put in two hundred and thirty million. I reached out to um Representative Felder and asked her because um there was some speculation that it may come back to the House this week. They call that House Two. Um, she said she was not sure it was going to make it on the calendar this week as they're trying to finish the session, I believe, on Thursday. Um, and she said that it would then potentially, uh, they were looking at some dates, but it would come back on the calendar the week of June the twelfth. So, that would be after you pass our, or hopefully you pass our local school district budget. So, I wanted to share that. Um, I was in a class today, so I do not know if anything happened today, if there was any discussion. I've not seen any notification. Ms. Branding, you're shaking your head. No, nothing happened today. So, um, it looks like it will probably be that second week of June. Um, and at that time, it could then just be the conference committee, the three House and three Senate members um discussing and debating what the final state budget numbers may look like.
Most of what I'm hearing is that that's what's going to happen.
What's going to happen, that they will not bring it up this week.
Is your plan to bring a recommendation based on Senate or House?
Um, I am going to tonight share with you the most recent that I have and then what I else I know I'm going to receive. And then, as always, you have the ability, if anything significantly would change, you could amend the budget.
I just didn't know if we're going to start with the best case or the worst case scenario.
I would, well, I would recommend that we go with the most current version.
Which is which?
Which is the Senate.
Okay, that's
Which is the Senate. And before we get into the budget, just wanted to share that the Senate version did still include teacher supply funds at the four hundred dollars. So, that's an increase over the three hundred and fifty dollars that teachers received this year uh in the state budget.
But that's also in the House.
That's also in the House, but
House and Senate.
It, correct. And we think that'll stand.
Right.
We are not hearing that there's any discussion about uh that number not being increased to the four hundred dollars per classroom. So, we think that that will stand. Um, what I want to do tonight, at the last meeting, we rolled out for you the administration's recommendation, the full recommendation for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget. At that time, that date, day, I had just received the Senate finance numbers. I have now updated um a few of these slides to show you uh the impact. I think I shared that night that we went down about five hundred thousand dollars in the Senate uh finance version. And that's what I'm going to show you. I reached out to the State Department over the weekend um because what we're waiting on now is those allocations are based on the forty-five day student counts across the state. And we're waiting on the one hundred and thirty-five day update. And I reached out and um my contact replied and said that they will send those out this week. So, I should have the Senate version based on the one hundred and thirty-five day count before we have to um advertise for our public hearing. Um, so we are just hopeful that we, I I just, being realistic, I don't expect we're going to see a large increase even though our student counts went up between forty-five days.
Difference between the forty-five and the one hundred and thirty-five, do you know?
Uh, I would say a hundred and something students.
They take out the December graduates, right?
Correct. That's why I think the net.
Yeah, okay.
Um, but I do not expect us to see a significant change from these numbers. I'm just hoping we don't have a significant reduction because of what we see happening sometimes across the state with with calculations. But hopefully, um, I will see those shortly in the next couple of days from them. And then we can update accordingly as we need to and share with you.
And that's for the public hearing, which is our next meeting.
Correct. We, well, we could have it on the agenda at the uh May second.
Forty-first. This is May.
Oh, this is May, correct.
The next meeting is the first.
Yes, we could have it on the agenda for the twenty-first.
Voting the first week.
And voting the first meeting in June.
Yeah, that's the current schedule anyway.
Yes.
I thought it was the public hearing was in June. And the vote.
Correct, but we have to advertise fifteen days ahead. So, we'll need to advertise So we'll need to advertise next week.
I got you, okay.
To meet that, that is a South Carolina legal requirement that we have to advertise 15 days ahead. But a couple of numbers I've updated to give you some idea. This is our very summarized revenue expense projection. The numbers that changed on here are the education funding, general fund, the $77,162,338. That is based on the Senate version of the 45-day counts. The Senate version of the 45-day counts or Senate finance, which the full Senate adopted the Senate finance version. And then the education funding, the EIA piece, the $15,529,589. Also, the other state, that is some, includes some allocation for employer insurance costs, and that number changed slightly. So those three numbers are now reflective of the newest allocations. And the total proposed budget would be $233,624,762. So as we started talking about the last meeting on the expenditure side, I adjusted down and took out category four recommendations because it was about that amount of money coincidentally. So I have presented to you here a balanced budget because I would not recommend that we use any fund balance for these recurring expenses. So I've adjusted down category four, but I've kept in the category priorities one, two, and three in these numbers. This is a little more detail as I've shared, just to give you a comparison of the 2023 budget actual for the new education funding and then the other two classifications of state revenue. So in total, our state revenue would go up $3,498,000. No changes on the local. I have still calculated the property taxes at the Act 388 formula increase allowed, which would be the 21.9 mils based on Consumer Price Index and growth. We're using $350,000 as the value of a mil, and that's based on current year collections. What we're seeing come into York County for local taxes as well as some of the variations of interest income tuition and rental based on this year's activity. These are once again updated for the state changes as we've discussed. So our total projected budget would increase $15,785,327. If you remember, at the last meeting, it was slightly over $16 million increase. So it's dropped down to 15.7 million. This is our category one priority request. There have been no changes. I just wanted to show you on here that now category one would require 16.9 mils. You can see that at the bottom. Based on the House version of the state budget, it would have only required 15.5 mils. It's now going to require 16.9 to meet category one.
And I know you say it every time, but I think it's worth repeating. Category one includes those things that we have no control over such as.
Correct.
Utilities as well as the additional growth positions that are required because of having X number more students and things like that.
Correct.
And stop and starting pay.
And salary for current staff, for all current staff as well. And here, I've dropped category four, and we still have category two and three as recommendations. And you can see this would take an additional three mils for category two, an additional 1.8 for category three. So now our running total is, I believe, 21.7 of the 29. And we will see what happens this week when the newest allocations. But these are the actual numbers still based on the original administration's recommendation to you at the last meeting.
The content of the recommendation has not changed. It just doesn't include the category fours that we had looked at before.
Correct, correct.
The same.
Yes, and I did not adjust. This plan would only require us to bring in 2 million of the contingency funds. We talked about possibly if we had to increase that a little bit and bring in a couple hundred thousand more. I just would not recommend that right now when, I think I said last time, we're on the heels of opening several schools. It's going to have such a large impact on the budget in the next couple of years that I would feel more comfortable if we stick with the 2 million only in this plan. Where we were using in the current year, we're using $3,350,000. So we're coming off of that a little bit.
And somewhere in here, back on category one, we had a handful of ESER positions that were shifted.
Whoops.
That's, that's the end of the ESER positions, so they would.
Correct.
They would be, all ESER positions that we have would be.
All ESER, our, our remaining seven ESER positions would now come into the general fund. ESER expires September 30th of this year, so it will be gone. And so we would either have to bring those positions into the general fund or we could no longer provide those services to our students.
But they're all in here.
They're all in here, yes. They're all in here. So I will open it up now for questions or for you to have discussion. But those are the changes, this would serve as second reading of our budget, but those are the changes related to the Senate version of the budget.
And we're still, I like round numbers. We're still 60% of our budget is on our local business taxpayer, and only 40% comes from the state, which four short years ago, before they changed this funding model, it was exactly opposite. Where 60% came from the state and 40% came from our local businesses.
Yes, I actually went back because you had discussed that at the last meeting, and I look back five years ago. So five years ago, in our 2018-19 budget, local taxes were 36.6%. And when I say local taxes, I'm only considering tax collections through York County, not Act 388 and some of the other state supplements like homes.
Our millage.
Our millage.
Our millage generated 37%.
Correct. In this plan, our millage would need to generate 45%. So that's an 8% increase over five years in local tax requirements.
45%?
I thought it was, I thought it was more like 60% was local now.
Yeah.
If you count, it depends on what you count. If you count some of the other, the homestead, tier one, tier three, then yes, we are well over 60%. But I just wanted to just break it down just to local taxes. Without those factored in, we have now absolutely shifted in the 40-60 to 60-40 range. Because remember, we're still on Act 388 with homes not paying operating millage. We are still between 40 and 50 million dollars short per year.
Yeah, every year.
Every year.
And that went into effect in the 2007-8 range. So do the math times.
Yes.
10 years.
Yes.
10 years, 18 years, at 50 million a year.
It wasn't 50 million the first few years.
It wasn't that much the first.
It keeps growing because the gap keeps getting wider.
We could use an average of 35, and it would.
I think it was about, it was less than 10 million.
Right, the first few years. Because we've gotten so many more houses.
Correct.
We're not collecting on.
Yes.
Ms. Lordo, so we, during spotlight schools and when we celebrate our student success, Ms. Spears is right, that's, that is the best time of these meetings, and this is the hard stuff. And I told you last time that this makes my stomach hurt, talking about this and doing this. But I want to, I want to clarify and just connect some dots.
Sure.
So we're having to cut category four even from consideration because we just wouldn't, because we have to raise more to even hit category one expenditure.
Correct, and you would not have the authority to raise more to go that high.
Right, so I'm just making sure that, I'm just, I'm making it easy for me. And so what we're looking at is cutting athletic and band coaching stipends, which you said previously that were needed to stay competitive on our market. And tonight, we celebrated our band.
Yes.
Students, and we have many times celebrated our athletic students. And we are cutting our STEM funding. And tonight, we celebrated students who are pursuing STEM/STEM career pathways in high school. And we are cutting teacher professional development. And tonight, we celebrated teachers and assistants that get to feel like part of the professional community and, and live it instead of call it a meeting. And we are cutting a 504 facilitator. And tonight, we heard from a concerned parent who wants to make sure that the 504 plan encompasses everything their child needs. And tonight, we are cutting even from consideration two ESOL teachers. And we have in the past celebrated how including kids in their native language on their first day is what makes Fort Mill, Fort Mill. And then we are cutting a GT teacher. And we talked tonight about how we don't stop a kid at the top of their grade level, but we work to meet their needs. So I get that we have, I understand that we have to even cut these from consideration. But I just want to say out loud how my heart breaks. So now my heart is broken and my stomach hurts that we have to make these extremely difficult decisions and tell those category four that are clearly important and valued by these people and by our community that we just cannot do that this year. So I don't have a question, I'm just whining, I guess.
Well said. I got questions.
I'll take it one step further, real quick. Category two and three are coming out of fund balance essentially.
Right, we still have to consider those.
Because we can even. Right, we, we at least have the ability to consider some amount of fund balance, but we're even having to go into fund balance just to get categories two and three because our full maximum tax increase available to us.
Doesn't cover.
Barely covers category one.
Right.
Correct, correct.
Okay. No question there either, just a statement.
Yep.
Okay.
I bet he's got a question.
I've only got one other, and mine's not even really a question, it's almost more of a statement.
Another statement.
I don't like the whole proviso idea when it comes to budgeting and, and doing this. I like that you all know we have an approved budget, we know what we're doing, and we move forward with it. But I'm really having a lot of heartburn at the prospect of going through and approving a budget with so much still being a juggling act, and we don't really know what Columbia is going to do and what's going to come out of that. Is there a chance we get our 30 million back? I doubt it. But if there is, a large part of me feels like it's smarter or better because they have to have it done by the end of June, technically. Or they go into a proviso status where we get swept into that proviso status that says we still get the same that we had for this past year, nothing more, nothing less. But I struggle with getting down the road to approve a budget and then all of a sudden miraculously, and I use that with much emphasis, miraculously, we get additional funding because Columbia comes back and writes themselves. So again, not a, not a question, but kind of more of a statement of we are totally and completely caught in a no-win, catch-22 situation sitting here because we have no clear-cut definition coming out of Columbia.
So I think if we miraculously did receive the 500,000 back, the 30 million, since we know that could happen, then you would have the decision to move on to category four items? Or you could adjust the tax millage? You would have that decision to amend the, the approved budget later.
But when was the timing that you said that the, you think they're going to come back to discuss it?
June the 12th.
So that's, so we would, in order to do that, we'd have to do a special called meeting that is not currently on anyone's calendar.
Correct.
Because we don't currently have.
Because we don't have a second meeting scheduled in June. That's kind of a us problem, I guess.
And we may not even have the, even if they come back that week of the 12th, it could take them a week or two in negotiation. And then, based on my experience, it generally takes another week before we receive.
The number's crunch.
The numbers. So it would probably be into July anyway.
I mean, at the end of the day, we're just hostages, that's all it is.
So we can, we can expect the possibility of, of another special called meeting sometime in late June, early July if, if we pass something prior to all those decisions being finalized.
Correct.
I'm done, your turn.
Yeah.
I promise.
Okay.
Take it away.
Alrighty. Last meeting hours pretty long, when it was about 20 minutes I went back and read, it won't be that long.
I'm waiting on the quantity of questions.
So I think we got six.
Okay, okay.
And maybe seven. With a qualifier. So, so just for clarity here, and, and I don't want to say I'm pushing back, but I just want to make sure I understand.
Sure.
Early from last meeting. So what I thought I heard was, no, I know I heard this, was 2020 or just prior to 2020, locally, we were getting about 38%. And then 2024, based on that budget, it was about 57.2%.
Just, just the taxes that come through York County, not the, the state reimbursements that are supposed to equal the taxes. The numbers that I was looking at was 37% compared to 45%.
Got it.
Just coming through the county.
Okay, all right, got you. So statewide, we were at 60% just prior to 2020, and we're 42 or 30, 41 and some change, whatever the case may be. Couldn't one come back, and I don't have the actual revenue per se, but I just knowing that since I've been on the board, we went from 160-ish or something like that to now 233 potentially million. One would say, well, there's still some revenue increase somewhere that you're utilizing that, that came from, volume-wise, right? Does, does that make sense? Can you square that?
It does. So volume-wise, I'll just kind of recap how I project out revenues for the next year is I look at the actual collections through what I call kind of tax season at the county level, November, December, January. And then I take that actual year-to-date number because that's based on the most current tax roll. And I project out to June 30th based on what we collected in the remaining months of the fiscal year last year. So what we collected in February, March, April, May, June last year. And then I take that number and I apply a growth percentage because we think we'll have some growth in the tax base for next year. So we don't want to over-project that because I certainly don't want to be standing up here and say we're in the red at the end of the fiscal year. But I use a projected growth based on historical figures of what we've seen. And that's how I come up with what I think we'll collect in taxes next year. And then that gives me the 350,000 millage that then I can share with you what your authority is on millage increase based on the formula. And so then we know how much applying the millage additional tax revenue will bring in. And so then we know how much applying the millage additional tax revenue will bring in. So what I'm presenting tonight as far as revenue, um, would be the maximum amount we could bring in next year in revenue.
But it's grown from, from that because every time a new business opens, there's more tax revenue, every time a new car gets repaired, there's more tax revenue. But it's also grown because the students have grown. And while we don't love the amount we get per student as much as we used to, we still are growing, you know, 500 students a year. And so the, the number has absolutely gone up in, in relation to, you know, the, the total income that we receive from the state. It's just that it's a lesser share than it used to be.
It's proportionately for us, um, as we've said many times, we, uh, the, the new formula is not favorable for us, the way that it's calculated. Um, one, based on poverty, and two, based on looking at the index of taxpayability piece is still in the formula. So it looks at the tax base of your community, and it assumes you're still going to collect a lot more on homes than we're actually able to by law. Um, but yes, so that's generally how I project out the revenue for the next year.
Okay. Next one, this is going into, uh, category one, and this is number five, new special ed assistance, uh, 15. So can you kind of share with the public, so what, what's kind of framed for us like the importance of those positions?
Sure. So, um, I, um, worked with Dr. Maziarz, and I can share with you her original budget was over 20. And, uh, we discussed it some more, and I said, okay, I need your absolute category one number. And she looks at, um, the projection, um, really by school, by classroom for special ed for next year. And, um, those students, how many she needs, where she needs to add additional assistance um, because of the needs by their classifications. Um, and that's how she determines how many additional special ed assistance because many of those classes need, um, several assistance based on the type of class, self-contained class that it is.
And the severity.
And so it's a, it's, it's a very thought-out process that this, the special, um, serve, they go through that process. And when she brings me the number, it, it's very tight, um, very tight.
Just in general, are we growing in the number of special, the percentage?
Tremendously.
Of special ed students?
Tremendously.
Of teachers and assistants?
Yes, yes, we are.
Are we shortchanging ourselves on this?
Um, well, as I said, her original number was much higher, but she's, she's very grateful to move forward with 15 right now. And if we do have, I will share with you, if we have, um, a critical situation where we have a new family move in during the year, and there is that critical need, um, we can make that decision sometimes during the year. And we can do that based on, you know, we're monitoring revenue coming in, we, we know we're okay to do that. And sometimes we just have to make that call.
Understood. So it's quite clear that, that the, even just from two weeks ago, there, there's been a change here. Um, or change in general on the, well, we removed category four.
We removed category four, correct.
Right, yes.
Correct.
So, so this particular question here is not nitpicky, but I'm just wanting to make sure I understand this. So category one, number 11, it's a $51,000 or $52,000, and this is regarding the technology software maintenance?
Yes.
Like, I, I know Brian is not here.
Yes, so these contracts, both for instructional technology and network engineering licensing, um, many of these contracts are based on, um, the size of our district. If we add new schools, if we add new staff, if we add new students. Um, that means we're adding more devices, um, across the district. And most of those contracts are based on those numbers. And so these are, um, what he considers inflationary, and I consider inflationary increases. Um, and actually, for the instructional technology increase, that covers 13 renewal contracts that are based on that type of data. And the network engineering, um, that covers six renewals. Um, so combined, that's 19 renewals in those numbers for existing contracts that we have.
Unless we do away with some of these.
Correct.
Materials, that's what the.
Yes, and also, um, in one of those numbers, um, includes our cyber risk management, which is very important. Um, and so he reviews that every year as well to determine, um, if we need to make any adds on our contract for cyber risk security.
Are these the, the ones that used to be year-end transfer requests kind of things?
Some of them are, yes.
Into this budgetary because we stopped with the year-end thing?
Correct, I, I believe now we have moved all of the recurring technology contracts into the recurring budget.
Okay, last one here. Uh, this is regarding number 16. This is, uh, the transportation activity bus gasoline and repairs. Is this a reflection of gas pricing? And the repairs part of this hit me home.
Yes.
There's a couple of times where I've driven to some of our athletic events. I've stopped once because we had a bus that broke down.
It's a combination.
Okay.
I actually, um, looked at, um, current year-to-date expenditures this year. And in, um, several of these areas, we may be tracking, like I projected out, we might go over budget a little bit. So I want to make sure we're planning for that next year. Um, obviously the increase in gas as well. We have more buses that are running, uh, more trips. Um, and so as we said, category one are things that I want to make sure we account for. And so I want to make sure that we are able to cover, um, those costs for next year. It's, it's hard to estimate, um, but I look at it and say, okay, do I think I might be a little over this year or breaking even, then I better plan for a little bit of an increase next year. And that's how I come up with those numbers.
Yes, thank you for your diligence in this.
Sure.
Thank you.
I have something, something to add.
Okay.
Or ask about. Um, I'd, I'd like to take this opportunity to address some of our community members that choose to try to vilify the board for increasing taxes. And in the same breath, they turn right around and want to criticize, somehow they want to come up with a criticism for the district and find some way that maybe we didn't, they try to say we didn't perform as well as the year before. So now with that as the backdrop, category one has pretty much got to do it. All right, it's going to happen, that's $14 million. If we did not, given, given our, our only way to fund this by the state, we have to raise millage.
Seventeen.
Seventeen mills is what it takes to cover this.
Just the category ones.
Just for category one. But if we went with zero increase. All right, that's $14 million. On average, that's going to translate into 175 positions that we have to cut because we're only at 90, we're already at 90% salaries. I just want them, hopefully they're listening, and they'll hear what I got to say. Because I'm a little frustrated by it. And I want them to think about it. Either A, they just really don't care, which is probably the case. Or B, they're weak-minded and can't add one in one to get to, to understand how, how you have to balance things.
How you really feel, Wayne?
Our growth isn't stopping.
Any uncertainty, I held back.
Yeah.
I, I think compared to many other businesses, um, it's just, it's a confusing, it's a very compli- complicated, complex set of numbers. Um, but we are heavier on the personnel side than probably any other company, any other type of business. And I think that's, that's the part that may get lost in translation is that, um, it, it, it takes a certain number of staff because it's a people business.
Right.
Our product is people. Exactly.
Well, our product is people, but not only that, but, but the reality is we believe in our product and our people, and we believe that the best way to educate children is smaller class sizes. And $14 million, you just had the number. $14 million is a whole lot of classroom numbers going up, a whole lot more even than what state law permits when you don't have any other options.
Well, I, I'll kind of add on to that, Wayne, and really piggybacking off what you said. If you were to go to any single person in our community and say, what does this community value more than anything else?
That's right.
What is, what is the greatest thing that our community produces? I, I would say within 90 to 100% of people, number one would have the schools. Would have schools is a valued part of what drives this community. It's why people come here, it's, it's, it's why people enjoy living here. Um, it's why they're passionate to come up here and talk about trying to preserve our community.
It's why they vote for a referendum.
Right.
To grow and build more schools.
It is what, it is what our community values. So when, this is very difficult. This is not an easy decision. But when you look at the value of what our community values.
That's right.
We're charged with something, and, and that is making sure that we try to find a way to get to category, category four. The thing, the things that you were talking about. Because the minute we start to slip and get criticized for slipping, everything that we value, that this community values, goes down with it. So we've got a, we're, we're charged with being the group that is, is, has to lead and make these tough decisions. But, but the whole foundation of what our community values is based upon it.
And I guarantee the torches would come out when the result was seen of what cutting 175 positions would do.
I know Michelle gets criticized for a cup of coffee comment, but I'll go back to at 21.9 mills, it is a $50 a year increase in the average car, which is what the average citizen will feel.
Which isn't nothing.
Not nothing, no, it's not nothing.
But.
It's not a cheap place to live.
We will all feel it.
Unfortunately. So.
And our housing prices are not going down by any stretch of the imagination.
But they might if the, if the schools aren't performing.
They will if the schools aren't performing, it's not even might, they will if the schools are not performing. Our neighbors to the south see it and feel it every day.
Okay.
Other questions for Leanne?
Yep.
Thank you, Leanne.
So I will share, once I have the, any new allocations, which I expect, I will share those with you, and then we'll move forward accordingly for the next meeting.
You've got a week before you actually put anything in the paper.
Correct.
Before you go to print with, with anything.
Correct.
But we expect that we're going to know anything new necessarily within the next week.
Hopefully, um, I was told by the end of this week.
Okay.
So.
At least the 135-day calculation.
Yes, yes. But we will not know about the additional 30 million.
Right.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that was fun. Dr. Epps, it's your soap, your soapbox time.
Oh, curriculum!
Hey, curriculum!
Oh, oh, shoot, I missed it, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
All right, soapbox or not, it's your turn.
Not yet, not yet. Um, good evening, tonight you are going to hear from six of our curriculum coordinators. Uh, and as you will see through this presentation, they've been very busy this year supporting our teachers, administrators, and ultimately our students. Um, our department has been very fortunate to grow, uh, to get kind of caught up to the size of our, our student population over the last few years, and we're so thankful for this. So we're excited tonight for you to see some of the fruits of that labor. So as a leader of this department, I get to see the impact, uh, the everyday impact our group is making on teachers and schools and the students, of course. Um, our job is pretty straightforward as a department. Uh, it's very, very complex, but very straightforward at the same time. It's helping our teachers to become better at what they do with the ultimate goal of accelerating the learning of all of our students. Uh, I'm so very proud of our team. Uh, when we started this year, I really challenged them with three things. I challenged them with helping grow PLCs in the schools. You hear the broken record of PLCs, I was really excited to hear River Trail talk about it. Uh, but that was our, our main focus as a department, how can we help grow our PLCs in the school? How can we promote teacher collaboration at every chance, every opportunity? How can we get our teachers, our experts, some of the best teachers in the entire world right here in our district? How can we get them to collaborate at every possible moment? And then to support our teachers as content area instructional leaders, something that we've been missing in the, at the district office, uh, before this crew arrived. Uh, how can they be real content area instructional leaders as we work to accelerate the learning for all of our students? So in previous meetings, you've heard from many from our department, Dr. Maziarz, Peter Olinger, Gail Scroggs, Amber Smith, Holly Logan, Renee Beck, Matt Roaring. Uh, I think those are all that you've heard, uh, throughout the year. And tonight you're going to hear from six others that make up our curriculum coordinators. Uh, before you do hear from them, I would like to thank each and every member of our department for their tireless dedication to our schools, our teachers, our administrators, and our students. I'm very proud of them, and I'm very proud of the work they have done this year. So at this time, I'll hand it over to Mary Elizabeth, who is going to get our presentation started.
Thank you, thank you for inviting us tonight. We hope our presentation cures your stomach ache, headache, um, uh, heartburn, frustration, all of those things. Um, as we go through what we've been up to this year. Um, our purpose tonight is to take you through what we have done this year as curriculum coordinators. Um, it's a relatively new position in the district. Um, three of us are in our first year as curriculum coordinators. Um, we would like to highlight the positive impact we've had on schools across the district. Um, our team, it's a little funny up there, but our team is made up of six excellent educators um, that will each be speaking to you about a different part, like Dr. Waksness said, of our, um, goals for the year, I think you have this handout in front of you. Um, so we're going to be going through those three things. Um, we have two ELA coordinators, Amanda Griffin and Maury Rhineblatt. Um, math coordinators, Kristy Swagonsky and Yashika Latimer. Our K-12 science coordinator, Greg Bropes, and I'm Mary Elizabeth Keiner, um, K-12 social studies coordinator. We have a lot of experience. We pulled these numbers at the beginning of the school year. So now that we're at the end of the school year, I think we can confidently say we have more than 100 years of experience in education. Um, we sent a flyer similar to this to, um, teachers at the beginning of the school year saying what we offer, instructional support, PLC support, anything that our teachers need, we are there for them. Um, that is everything from professional development to clarifying state standards. Our goal is to support a guaranteed and viable curriculum in everything we do and our instructional practice is to achieve that goal. Um, we love working with our teachers, and we wish them a very happy Teacher Appreciation Week. Um, I found these numbers surprising, I think our department found these numbers surprising. I don't know if you'll find them surprising, but we have been tracking our school visits throughout the year. And we are over 1,100 school visits, not just between the six of us, but between our curriculum department members. Um, and this is probably a low estimate because some of us are maybe behind in logging those numbers. So maybe it's 1,500, maybe it's 2,000, I don't know. Um, but it's at least 1,151 as of today. So like I said, we're going to go through these three categories. I'm going to hand it over to Yashika Latimer to talk about PLC support.
Good evening. Thank you, River Trail and Dr. Waksness for going ahead and making my job a little easier. Um, so we're going to talk, I'm going to talk to you about the professional learning community and our professional learning teams. Professional learning teams is a little bit of a new vocabulary for us this year. So sometimes you'll hear that intertwined with each other, but I'll kind of break that down for you a little bit. So as you're looking up here, these are some of our, or a few of our teams. We have a lot of teams within each school. So if we're looking at an aerial view, the community is the district, and then each school is a community, within each school they have teams. So our jobs are to go out and support the teams, and we try to do that, um, weekly and get out and make sure that we have access to them. Before we started supporting the teams, though, we began at the beginning of the year with Engage to Learn. And that was our overall, um, conference to bring everyone together. Each coordinator presented at Engage to Learn, we led sessions where we were like kicking off the year for our particular teams that we're working with, our particular communities that we're working with. We also have a PLC playbook that we began last year. We began this work collaborating with principals to build out what our expectations were for PLCs throughout the year, kind of giving a scope and sequence of how we're going to roll out things. It's an ongoing process, so we're still not finished with it. But this is one way that we're developing our community together. Within our professional learning teams, before you, you have some of our greatest work for this year. Um, we developed this within our Java-like sessions. These are our essential standards. Our essential standards, uh, Mary Elizabeth already talked about a guaranteed and viable curriculum. Our essential standards are grade-specific and course-specific standards that help progress learning to the next grade level or the next course. So what we did was we brought together these professional learning teams that we were speaking of. We brought them all together and we had them go through the standards and we had them identify what is essential for your grade level. What is essential for your course? What is the one thing or the few things that your kids have to learn to be successful in the next course as they're moving on? What you have before you, we've established middle school essential standards. Um, we have ELA, elementary essential standards. Math, um, elementary math essential standards will be coming this summer. They'll be working on those with our new standards coming up. And then high schools have started the process and then when we refine that process as we come back in the fall. This is an ongoing process and it also takes place within the professional learning teams. So our hope is and our expectation is that they have these essential standards out. In addition with their other standards, as they're unpacking their documents, as they're, um, doing data analysis, as they're working with how to make sure each one of these kids are accomplishing goals within our schools. We know that we have highly successful schools. And so to sustain and enhance that, our goal is to make sure that we create a process and a structure to continue that throughout our school year. And then now I'm going to turn it over to Maury Rhineblatt and Kristy Swaginski.
Hello, I'm Kristy Swaginski. I'm the elementary math coordinator. Um, Maury and I are going to share with you today some of the ways that we support teachers with instruction. That is obviously a very big part of our job. Um, so we just have a few pictures here of just some professional development activities that we've done throughout the year. Um, we do provide lots of just professional development. Some of them are very formal sessions that we put together. Some of them are just on the spot. We get emails and phone calls a lot, all of us throughout the year. Hey, can you come out and help our team with this? Or my students are struggling with this. Can you come out of the lesson? So we're continually providing professional support like that. Highlighted up here are just a few of the professional development sessions we've done this year. To highlight one of them, steaming through our standards, Holly Logan, our STEAM director, asked us to collaborate with her and provide some training around STEAM that incorporated our standards. So we met as a, uh, curriculum coordinators to look through our standards and we, a couple of years ago, we had new social studies standards, new science, we just got new ELA, we're getting new math. And something that we noticed with those standards is they're really bringing what's called process standards to the forefront. So we have content standards that tell us what we need to teach. But then the process standards define what our instructional methods and strategies should, should look like. What are those practices and behaviors that the kids should be doing as they're learning about this content? So we had our teachers go through the process standards and sort them for all content areas. And we had them look for evidence of the five Cs. Because we realized when we were looking through at the commonalities, that the five Cs are sprinkled throughout all of our process standards. So we wanted our teachers to see if they really focus on implementing those process standards, they're hitting STEAM education in the five Cs. So they found evidence of collaboration, communication, creativity, critical thinking, and they even found caring in there. Um, so then after that, each of our content areas, we shared strategies with the teachers and STEAM leaders on how can you implement then those process standards? What are some easy strategies that you can use for any topic you're teaching? Um, another way we provide instructional support is through book studies. There are so many amazing books out there in the education world right now. We kind of laugh, we've been reading a lot of books lately. Um, a part of our job, we didn't realize, we would do so much reading. Um, but there are amazing books out there and it's awesome to, to come together as a professional learning community across the district. Um, to read those books, reflect on them, collaborate. All, these are three book studies that we, um, just held throughout this year, this year with different groups. Um, but those book studies all come from a different need that come up with our teachers or our leaders, um, to meet that need and kind of collaborate around that topic and how we can continue to refine and get better for our students. Another way that we provide instructional support is through peer learning. We have amazing teachers in our districts who are doing amazing things. So what better place to go than to those teachers' classrooms to learn? Um, we set up classroom visits all the time. We're out in schools all the time seeing these great things. So we can help connect, um, groups and teachers to whatever learning need that they have. We also have set up, um, different like learning labs with literacy. Um, Yashika with middle school and high school math has set up some learning labs this year for teachers to come in and observe. Um, so a lot of learning, again, they're just learning from their peers.
So, uh, one of our focuses this year was providing team support with identifying and utilizing data, um, to improve their instruction. So in March, uh, we brought, as a group, we brought in Dr. Mike Rule from Marzano Resources to lead a half-day workshop for all middle school teachers on best practices related to building assessments and interpreting assessment data to close learning gaps and, uh, to determine mastery of standards. We've also collectively led numerous data conversations with teams of teachers related to various benchmark and state assessments, including EOC, SC Ready, STAR, and even our Common Formative Assessments on a minor basis, as well as our End of Unit Summit of Assessments. Um, and some of this work could range from disaggregating some of that data into smaller subgroups, um, or by standard or focused skill. Um, in addition to data analysis, we're always looking for ways to provide support with instructional resources. So in partnership with the South Carolina Department of Ed, we've part, uh, we participated in the K through twelve textbook caravan to select new ELA instructional materials this year. We've also brought in several textbook companies such as HMH, McGraw-Hill, to provide training and support for our teachers on their digital platforms and textbook resources. Um, outside of state-level textbook adoption, we've worked tirelessly as a crew um, to develop subject-specific playbook websites and newsletters with instructional materials and support documents such as our essential standards documents that Yashika spoke to earlier, um, as well as links to state webinars. Lastly, we provide instructional support with standards clarity, and this is perhaps some of our most important work. So la, um, so first and foremost, we, we provide clarity with conversations with PLTs. So we've helped teams interpret the language of state standards and indicators in order to determine intended learning outcomes and rigor of the, uh, intended standard. We've clarified the differences between content standards and process standards, which Kristi just kind of spoke to. So for example, in social studies, a content standard could be determining the causes and effects of the American Revolutionary War. But a process standard could be, um, analyzing primary or secondary sources. Um, we've also done some work with next-generation science standards. We know that South Carolina state standards are closely aligned with NGSS and that these standards provide expectations for students on what they should know and be able to do in science and engineering. Um, in ELA and math, uh, specifically, we've provided several opportunities for teachers to learn more about the new state standards. We know ELA will be implementing those new standards next school year and then math will follow in the following school years as well. And then finally, we've provided, um, standards clarity by bringing teachers, um, in to preview upcoming units of instruction and ensuring that they feel confident, um, implementing the specific standards aligned to that unit. Um, I'll turn it over at this point now to Greg, um, Brobst, who will speak to you about collaboration. Thank you.
Hi there. I'm Greg Brobst, K-12 Science Coordinator. Uh, one of the things I enjoy most about my job is having the opportunity to work with some of the most dedicated and caring educators in the country, uh, several of which I'm presenting with this evening. And so as coordinators, we work as a team to model collaboration for all teachers across the district. This is something we're asking our teachers to do as part of the PLC process and we're trying to help kind of model what this looks like. Broadly speaking, this collaboration can be broken into three areas. Collaboration across the district office, across schools, and across the community. I'd like to take just a few minutes to delve into what this collaboration looks like. So if we look at the district office, um, we work with all of the departments across the district office. As a team in the curriculum department, we've been working on a book study on the six, of the fifteen-day challenge. And, uh, through these discussions, we've been exploring how we can continue to support teachers in the PLC process. Additionally, we're, like I said, we work closely with many other departments here at the district office. I'd like to highlight the technology department in particular. We work with them to make sure that our teachers have access to all the digital resources that go along with their curriculum. And so without their collaboration and their tremendous support, we would not be able to provide these materials for our teachers to use with their students, which is ultimately what this is about, providing our teachers with opportunities and resources for their students. When we look at collaboration across the schools, as we've already attested to, we are frequently out and about at all of our schools and programs across the district. We provide teachers with opportunities to collaborate and share resources with each other through opportunities like Engage to Learn and Java-like sessions. I'd like to highlight one opportunity in particular. Over the past year, we as coordinators were invited to participate in the FMSD Coaching Academy. Educator Effectiveness, and really Jen Johnson in particular, organized an amazing opportunity for us to collaborate with leaders from many of the schools across the district. This included elementary coaches, both literacy specialists and math specialists, technology integration specialists, and middle school lead teachers. It was just an excellent opportunity for us to get together with a lot of the teacher leaders in our schools to look at what coaching looks like as we coach teams and individual students. A continuing goal of the curriculum department is to incorporate more regular community involvement into the work that we do. At the state level, all six of the curriculum coordinators are active participants in our state leadership groups, where coordinators and specialists from across the state meet once a month to kind of talk about what this looks like at the state level. In fact, Yashika Latimer and I are both on the board of our respective organizations. We also work with the State Department of Ed in textbook level, so state-level textbook review materials to make sure that those materials are aligned with our state standards and match up with the profile of the South Carolina graduate. Finally, we work closer to home with, uh, all sorts of communities, uh, all sorts of partnerships around the Fort Mill community. One that I'd like to talk about in particular, because it's one that I think is really unique, is I, I work with the stormwater department here in Fort Mill. And, which is a weird thing, I know. Um, but I'm lucky enough to work with a great group there and it's really about providing our students with opportunities in the real world. So that they can look at what engineering might look like in the real world. And Mina McLean is just a fantastic person to work with. A shout out for her if you, if you don't know her. She works in the stormwater department and is tirelessly looking for opportunities for our students to just be involved in that. With all that being said, I know you've had a long evening. I'm going to pass it on to Amanda Griffin to close this out for the evening. Thank you.
All right. So as we kind of finish up, I just want to leave you with this quote. It really kind of sums up this group and the work that we do. Collaboration is the fuel that drives change with instructional support as its vehicle and professional learning as its destination. It paves the way for the transformative journeys in education. And this really does sum the group. Like, we've done a lot of work with supporting our teachers with, uh, professional learning teams. We've done a lot of work with just instructional support for our teachers. And we've done a lot of work with just helping our teachers, um, and schools just with, through collaboration. And to be honest, this group right here, we could not do it without you. And we just really want to say thank you for approving these positions. These have been critical roles for our district. And I think a lot of the positive impacts that we're seeing across our district are because this amazing group right here has been able to come together, collaborate, and just, um, really support this strong, um, community of teachers that we have. So, um, just thank you so much for everything. We really do appreciate it. And I'm the lucky one that gets to say, what questions do you have?
I have some. I have a couple.
Sure.
Just a couple.
Yes, I do. Yeah. So actually, I want to start off by saying, what's that, Wayne?
I was hoping.
Go ahead.
I know they were.
So, uh, Dr. Epps, I want to say to you, this was a powerful presentation. This is what tradition of excellence looks like. That's what that is, what just, what they just exhibited.
We needed to hear from them more because that's really what we do.
Oh, my goodness.
We don't make cars. We don't make cloth. We make people, like you said.
Yes. So, Ms. Griffin, you stated, I'm just reading what you said, collaboration is the fuel that drives change. So I got a question for you and for Ms. Latimer.
Sure.
If you would, both of you, share with me, what are you most proud of?
That's a good one. Um, you know, when I came into this role, it was a, you know, very new role. Didn't really know exactly what all entailed, what all I was going to be working, um, working with. As I, um, began, we knew we were getting new standards and there's been a lot of change at our state, um, with the new standards and state legislation, especially with literacy. And, um, it's been a little bit of a roller coaster. Um, I've had my ups and downs, but I will say I'm finally at a place where I feel really excited and successful with, uh, going into this next school year. And our teachers are ready for these new standards and they're ready for new curriculum. And, um, I will shout out my literacy coaches. They're, they're why. They're a big reason why, um, I'm ready and, um, our teachers are ready. So I think that's a, it's a big, a big piece, a big, um, piece that I'm proud of.
Perfect. Thank you. Ms. Latimer?
Um, I will have to piggyback off of what Amanda said because we came in together, um, started the same day and we were just giving it and just said, hey, here, go with it, right? A little intimidating at first, but one of the beauties of this job is that we have a lot of support to try new things. So one of the things that I'm most proud of, that I will bring back to you in a couple of weeks at the next board meeting, are our math lab classrooms that we created this year in collaboration with Educator Effectiveness Department. So it's been a joy, um, to, to have teachers who are willing to undergo the process. Some of the teachers who are participants have been teaching for twenty-plus years and they're like sponges. They're just soaking up everything that we do in professional development. They're willing to try whatever in their classrooms. They're opening their doors to people, so they're being vulnerable and taking risks. The students are starting to request that we come back into the classrooms. They want you guys to come in. Um, they're giving us unique names. Uh, I've been named the president of schools. And Jen Johnson has been named the vice president of schools. So the kids are excited to have us come in. The teachers are doing student-centered learning. And so it's just an overwhelming process, but the biggest part is for the teacher to say, thank you for giving me this opportunity to do this. So that's been the most rewarding.
Perfect. And I'll leave you with this, Dr. Epps. So Mrs. Pratt and I were fortunate to be a part of a math, math lab. I was fortunate to be a part of two of them, but both at Fort Mill. And it was one of the most wonderful experiences that I've had gone in to be a part of observing, kind of the methodology of how we're going about this math, math lab. And then being on a, kind of a debrief with the actual teacher, um, and seeing the response. And so that's been so satisfying and gratifying. So I just wanted to say fantastic job. It was a wonderful experience for me. I won't speak for Lippy, but.
For me as well. It's very cool. It's very cool. And I love that. And I know I've asked that you talk to the whole group and share it in greater detail. But what I love about it is that it gives our teachers a chance to be leaders and stay in the classroom and lead from the classroom and, um, that, that feels like it matters. So I love that program.
Absolutely.
Excited for y'all to hear about it. So I've added it to our agenda. Mr. Waksness indulged.
So one of the things, Ms. Griffin, that you said that, that kind of struck me and, and I love hearing this, um, that we're ready for the new standards for the coming year. And I feel like every year, we get new standards in one version or one fashion or another. And every year, it takes a crew and, and we finally have the full crew to help dissect it and digest it and process it and then help our teachers to be able to absorb it, to disseminate it. And, and I'm really looking forward to that because, you know, if, if we're not able to do that and, and help our teachers to do that, which ultimately helps our students to be, you know, the profile of the South Carolina graduate and, and to receive a world-class education, then we see dips and we see ebbs and flows and, and all the rest of that. So I'm really looking forward to what that looks like for the coming year and, and how we continue to do that. Because we're not done. They're going to change it again every time we turn around, whichever subject. So thank you all truly for digging in and rolling up and, and rolling out. So.
Thank you. And, and again, that just, I just have to reiterate, I don't think it would be successful if we didn't have these positions.
Sure.
You know, we've, we've, it's been, it's allowed us to have this time to research, to read, to learn, and then to collaborate and work with those, um, folks in the schools that we need to, to make this happen. So it, thank you.
It took collaboration for you all to.
To do this.
Yes, exactly. For sure. Dr. Waksness is wonderful.
I have, I have one quick question. Uh, first of all, you talk about your stomach hurting with budget. This makes my heart happy because there's such a trickle-down effect with having the type of support that we're providing that, that really impacts student learning. Um, and I, and I think that's really what it's all about. But, um, it also plays a key part in, in teacher retention, right? The amount of support that we're, we're playing. So having these positions and, and the work that you're doing, I think is, is a, a true bolstering. I think is a true bolstering method of teacher retention for our district, you know, that's proven to work. Is there overlap? I know you talked about different departments that you worked with. Is there a concentrated effort at times to support the beginning teacher? You know, maybe talk a little bit about that, how that sort of differentiates. I know your goal is to support all teachers, but how do you work with maybe new teachers or struggling teachers that kind of overlaps our teacher effectiveness group?
Yeah, and I'll let you...
That's for any of them.
Again, like Greg had said, we do overlap, and we work with a lot of departments. And we do try to work with Educator Effectiveness on that as well. We do know we are constantly getting new teachers, and so we have to make sure that they're prepared. One of the things that I feel like our school levels do a really good job of onboarding new folks, and then we kind of can help layer on. We're invited to come to their, is it the Jump Start? Ed Camp and Jump Start. So that's one place where we can come in to help provide support for them. It's kind of funny. We were just having a conversation, Peter and I, with Jessica Callaway, the coach for, what's her title? Educator Effectiveness coach, thank you, about this issue. Because, you know, we've got, this is just one example, we've got new teachers coming in, and they're all going to have to start letters training next year, and that's big. So we collaborated with them on, okay, what can we do to make their transition a little bit easier? And we came up with some great ideas, so they're able to kind of, you know, kill two birds with one stone on the project that they have to do through the letters training. So it's little things like that that we're trying to really be cognizant of, these first-year teachers and new teachers coming to our district.
So one of the ways that we kind of partner with Educator Effectiveness also is if they're in a classroom and they see a teacher struggling with content, then they can reach out to us. And from that point, I've actually gone into classrooms with Jessica together, and we've supported teachers through what they needed and making sure that they had all of the tools that they needed to be successful. At that point, I don't take over. It's kind of a collaboration, but I still make sure that I'm supporting the best that I can and letting that teacher know that I'm available for them. So sometimes we'll get a new teacher in the middle of the year as well. So they may have missed some of the onboarding processes, so we'll make sure that they have the tools that they need. So for instance, this year, they reached out from one of our high schools, and so they missed a professional development that the other teachers had last year in Algebra I. So I made sure that I got them Zoom call with the people who did the professional development so that they could have those resources as well to help support them.
That's awesome.
We also, I just want to throw one other piece. We also, Amber's not here, but we also heavily... We collaborate and lean heavily on Amber with CI3T process and try to make sure that we incorporate that in as well. So one of the goals is to try to, sometimes teachers feel overwhelmed, so we try to find spaces to merge those together so teachers can see it's not an additional thing for them to do, but they all work together. So sometimes if you come on our hallway, we're in Building C. We're the cool building. Sometimes if you come on our hallway, we have a lot of collaboration going on in our building. We're just yelling out across the hall at each other because we work heavily with each other.
All right, I want to go now. I want to go now. Okay. So I heard something that really jumped out at me, and it was one part in particular. Dr. Epps, we have buy-in with our teachers on this, and that's huge for me, especially with when we, in regards to teacher retention, things of that nature. It was stated, I believe it was you, Ms. President, who said that we've got teachers coming in, we've got teachers been here for 25 years, and you're coming in their classrooms. And you used the word, your word was, they have vulnerability.
Yes, sir.
That's so key, that they're open. For people who are in an industry and experts in the industry for that long, they can kind of have their way of doing things. And so, Dr. Epps, you have a culture here that has buy-in, and they're open, they're vulnerable to learning and growing. This is how we go from 2% to 1%. This is great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hey, let me follow up with what Joe stated, and I think Lippi would vouch for this. So what was very fascinating to me is that you've got four, five, six people that's roaming around the classroom. And for me, my background is observing people. And so teachers were not phased at all. There was a comfort level, and they're here. I'm going to do it the way I've been doing it. So this is what we've got going on, and so that was wonderful to see from my perspective.
I will say we've had up to 10 roaming around a classroom and a video camera because Reed's been in there as well. The students didn't flinch, and neither did the teacher. They just kept going business as usual, so that was great.
I mean, we've always known that we have the best teachers and that they are the secret sauce for success. I think, Dr. Federrell, you said, I mean, one of the things we try to do is we try to support them financially with everything that we can. And we, you know, that is a key component. But feeling supported is equally, maybe equally, as critical, you know, as the pay as well. And so I think that's the culture that makes Fort Mill unique, special, and hopefully will help us with the retention just across the board because, you know, we can only do so much. We're doing as much as we can financially, but to feel respected and supported, I think, is really, is key for the teachers who are, you know, lifelong learners and give 110% every day to do the best they can to help our students.
That team is there to help our teachers be better.
That's right. So thank you all for what you do.
Yes, and thank you. I hope you saw a glimpse into the world of all the work they do. I know from being in this district for a little while now, the crew we had before was great, but very small. It was like three of us. And I just, I know we would not be able to provide the support that our teachers get now, so thank you so much for your support.
You know, you've talked before about sort of 20,000 students is an imaginary threshold, but it's kind of when you go from being a smaller district to being a medium, a mid-sized district, and it requires more of these types of cross-hor horizontal functions and support, right? Because it can't be as individually hands-on anymore. And so I think that's what we're seeing is the need for, and the fulfillment of these kind of things. Yep, yep.
Good tonight was the sandwich technique. You took River Trail and you're gonna get a sandwich budget in there, so.
That's right. All right, and now you're up.
Y'all messed me up. I was going to do my report and finish the comment, but I don't have to start with the comment now. You know, and the board and the school administration, the district administration, we all have such important jobs and very challenging jobs. You know, when you're dealing with people's children, safety and the education of their children, you're dealing with their money, the tax money, it's a thankless role that y'all serve. And that's why I harp all the time and thank you so much for being willing to serve on the school board.
For that big salary.
The thing I'm most proud of, I believe, just looking back on it, is we've been able to maintain the high-quality public school system. We can improve. We can always improve. We've been in spite, in the face of all this growth. And so I think these kind of initiatives, these quality initiatives that Christie's talking about, is what in other districts have it, but we do have buy-in, Joe, I believe. And I think these initiatives put us a level above and prepares for the next challenge. There's always going to be challenges. But if somebody thinks, mistakenly thinks, you can come into the system and not improve it, I don't think the community, Scott, would put up with it. So it's not like these taxes make us feel good. And you've seen it. Once you get on the inside, you see what challenges we're up against with the state funding model. We're not rewarded like we feel we should be from the state level, and I get it. We're a poor state, and everybody needs money. But it's a tough, it's a tough job and a tough role that you have. And once you're in here and see it, it's hard to, it'd be hard to not fund Level 1 or Category 1. We could do it, but I think you'd see the quality in the system go down. I think you'd see higher teacher-people ratios. I think you'd be coming in here with a pitchforks, the majority of the problem, I think.
Teacher attrition, too. There's a big chunk in that 14 million.
So I just throw that out there. Children and their money, and it's not an easy job for any of you, and I think, and the people who are doing it on a day-to-day basis are, like we say, the secret sauce and what makes it all happen, so. For what it's worth. Now the mundane part of my report. The calendar. The school board meeting tonight. A new event on there. I mentioned it last week. On the Monday, we're going to visit Oak Grove Academy at 11:00. Then we have, on Tuesday night, the 14th, we have Representative Ray Felder and David O'Neill will present individual state championship. You know, instead of inviting them to Columbia and taking buses down, Representative Felder had started this about three years ago. It's a good idea where she comes to Fort Mill and accomplishes the same thing, these recognitions from the legislature. The school board meeting, we will have on the 21st, Memorial Day holiday. Then the last two days are half-days. Then we roll on into June. High school graduations, NAFO at 10:00, Foreman High at 2:00, Catawba Ridge at 6:00. The teacher work day on Monday, and then we'll have the public, school board meeting, public hearing on the budget on Tuesday, June the 4th. Any other dates that I failed to mention, board members? Okay. Enrollment update. It was one of those months where we kind of, we took in 23 and we turned out 23. It was a net of zeros. It's kind of weird or odd, but it's that time of year, I think, where we have some... A lot of that was at the high school level. I'm not sure if that's attributed to kids going into alternatives or moving. I'm not sure what that is, but I think we do most of our growth in the summer anyway, but that's kind of a...
Would not be an ideal time to change schools.
It wouldn't be. It wouldn't be, so. 18-4-1-4, and you add the graduates who are still in there, the mid-year graduates are still in there, about where I thought at 18-5. Questions about that?
It's not a question, but it's just an observation. I know we talked about this at last meeting, that the average daily membership, which is what we're actually funded on, is about attendance and not enrollment. And what was it, 18-1 instead of 18-5?
It's confusing for both.
Yeah.
So to that, that's a great segue for a question that I had, and not necessarily for now through the end of this year, but I think for starting next year. We track attendance for staff. Would it be possible, given that our funding comes from daily membership numbers and so on and so forth, would it be possible for us to, the same way we track attendance for schools and staff, to track attendance by schools for students?
I guess I have to ask the smart people in the room that question.
I'm sure they do track it. It's just...
I think it's worth more funding, and, you know, it factors into what is it that we do? Well, we're in the people business, so to know what...
It's harder to learn if you're not there.
...by school, that's right. So.
And I know in all the clipping articles that we all get, there's a lot of discussion in other districts about chronic absenteeism.
Right.
And because I was reading so much, I had asked the question, do we have that? And it sounds like our numbers are fairly low, but that attendance is a relatively large problem in other parts of the state, but fortunately not as much here, I don't think.
If y'all want to practice for the next month or two, that's okay, but don't, it's not like...
Not urgent, so.
We can start it in August.
We can play with it.
Just don't forget.
Okay, then, teacher attendance, as noted. The high school leader was Nation Ford with 95.4. Come down to the middle school, Gold Hill Middle with 95.3. And then the leader has led the district for about, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 months out of 8. Springfield Elementary at 96.6. I don't know what's in the water out there, but we need to get it in front of the others. That's all I have.
Wonderful.
Nothing else for the other group?
No, I was going in with a pep talk, but I started with this.
Well, we are in need of an executive session to discuss personal recommendations and legal issues, so I'll entertain a motion into executive session.
Go into executive session.
And thank you all for joining. Have a lovely rest of your evening.